Nakadochas City Council Meeting, August 5th, 2025. Brad, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Yep. Your head, please. Dear Lord, thank you for this incredible day that we have here, for all the blessings that we have, and the blessing of all these people that have come to this meeting. And help us to understand that every decision we make, both the people that are here on each side of the issue, it's important to them. It matters to them. There is no right or wrong. There is just the best decision that we can make. And help us to see as you see, to love as you love, to do as you do, Lord, and give us the strength to follow where you lead us and to somehow understand that your plan is better than ours. In Jesus Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen. If you'll stand for the pledges, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Nobody's turned anything on open forum. Okay, next item is open forum, and there being none, we'll go to the items to be removed from the consent agenda, if any.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Now, we'll get right into the regular agenda. Item 6A, discuss and consider an ordinance amending Chapter 22 Cemeteries, Article 2, Use Regulations, Article 3 Sunset Memorial Park, Article 4 Pine Grove Cemetery, Article 5 Oak Grove Cemetery of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Nakadochas, Texas, providing a severability clause, providing continuation clause, providing a repeal clause, and providing an effective date, Mr. City Attorney.
Members of the council, Jerry Baker, City Attorney. For the first part of this presentation, I'm going to turn it over to Jessica to kind of go over just a kind of overview of the reasoning we're here right now, and then I'll kind of go through the proposed amendments to the ordinance. If that's okay.
Mayor, Council, Jessica Sal, Community Services Director. So our proposed ordinance change today is over Chapter 22, which is our cemetery ordinance. A bit of background, one of the earliest references we can find to a cemetery ordinance is in 2000. It seems like the ordinance was in three different places. So in 2000, the council at the time approved kind of a combination ordinance where we put everything in one place. There was an update in 2013 where it looks like the wording was clarified and then our plot prices were included in the ordinance. And those were the two updates that we have found. So then our proposed amendment today would allow for monuments up to 60 inches tall, including the base at Oak Grove Cemetery, establish a way to request a variance for headstones larger than that in Oak Grove Cemetery, clarify some wording in multiple sections, and then define the term monument and mausoleum. Those things, plus several other terms, are used a little bit interchangeably in the ordinance, which created a bit of confusion. And just a note, this proposal will not change the height restrictions at the other city-owned cemeteries, because this ordinance is for all the cemeteries, but this update would simply be for Oak Grove. And then Jerry can go over the specifics as well.
Okay, so as you can see on the screen before you, the particular section begins in Chapter 22, Section 34, where, and we, the first thing we did is add a definition section. So basically, all of the subsections kind of moved down a notch, and we added a definition section, subsection A, that include a definition for monument, which show me in a headstone, grave marker, or similar permanent object of stone, bronze, or con, or, I'm sorry, or bronze, that was updated in the, in my latest amendment, that serves as a memorial to a person interred in the lot upon which the monument is located, and that it may be used interchangeably with the terms marker, or stone, or monumental structure that are used throughout the ordinance, or Chapter 22. And also a definition for mausoleum, because that was not also defined in the statute. So basically, that's, that's the big addition to that section of the code. The next revision is to Section 22-35, and as Jessica referenced, the, the height restriction is maintained for all other cemeteries within the city, with the exception of Oak Grove, which we'll get to in just a minute. So you see that exception there stated. And the remaining parts of the amendments, go through each one of the cemeteries, there are some language that had been carried over as we were looking back some of the old ordinances. For whatever reason, it was never removed, and it maintained in our online version of the ordinance. Actually, there was a, an ordinance amendment that Jessica referenced back in 20-
13.
2013.
13, that had actually removed this language here, which says to eliminate the undesirable obsolete fixtures usually found in little cemeteries. For whatever reason, the online version never removed that. So what we're doing is following up on that and removing that language in all three sections of, when we're talking about Sunset, Pine Grove, or Oak Grove Cemeteries. So that, that language is being removed from every section there. Then, of course, as Jessica referenced, the last part is to specify monument height restriction in Oak Grove that exceeds what, what's in the current ordinance, to, to extend that up to 60 inches above ground level, and to create a variance, or the ability of, of an owner to apply for a variance, to go beyond that height if they can demonstrate the requirements set forth there. They would have to submit a plan to the cemetery board for review and approval, and show that, you know, there's a hardship that they would seek to have that, that, that new height restriction of 60 inches to go beyond that, that amount. So that's, that covers all the amendments that are set forth in the proposed amendment. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Are we changing it from a certain number to 60?
Correct. So right now, the current height restriction is 36 inches, and that applies across the board. What this does is create a specific exception for Oak Grove Cemetery only.
I got you.
So extend it up to 60 inches and create a variance that would allow you to even go beyond that, that restriction if you meet those requirements.
Because some of those in there, you have, that are feet.
In the, in Oak Grove Cemetery? Correct. Yeah. It's an historical cemetery. So why that, you know, I, I went back and kind of looked through the prior versions of these, the ordinances, and I was just trying to determine where that language came from. It looked like that the restriction was originally a place for Sunset. That restriction, as the new cemeteries came and became city-owned or city-operated cemeteries, it got carried over to these other cemeteries with, as far as I can tell, no consideration of the, the particular nature of the cemetery. So when the city began to operate, or Oak Grove Cemetery, or at least a portion of it that it currently operates right now, that language carried over to that. So that, I think, I don't know that it was intentional, it just was carried over because back in 1957, when one of the earlier ordinances I looked at, Sunset was the only city-operated cemetery at that time. So-
Okay. One other question. Jerry. Okay. Did, did the Catholic Church donate some property to Oak Grove?
I'm not aware.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I can't answer that question.
Okay.
I could look that up and get it back to you.
I had heard that they did, but that's just-
I think there may be a portion of the cemetery that's retained by Oak Grove, I mean, retained by the Catholic Church. That's, that's the extent of the knowledge that I have about that.
So that is my question. I do believe that there is a large part that we refer to in Oak Grove Cemetery that is not city-owned. And do we, does this, does this ordinance pertain, this only pertains to city-owned properties?
That's correct. That's the extent of that restriction. And, and any kind of requirements that we have are only for city-owned-
For city-owned property, because there is a large portion-
So if there's any portion of Oak Grove that's not owned by the city, these regulations would not apply to it.
Thank you.
Do we maintain the part that's not owned by the city for the Catholic Church?
Yes, so to my knowledge, and some of this was from my predecessor in Peggy Hasso, who was representing the Catholic Church at the time, who probably took over from Molly Bell. So that section of the Catholic cemetery is maintained and owned by the city, but the Catholic Church owns all of the plots. So they individually sell them out, but not the land surrounding. So any of the ordinances about city cemeteries would apply to that section as well, because it is fully engulfed by Oak Grove, but the plots, the city does not sell. So if there are vacant plots, the Catholic Church owns that, and then they sell those to whoever they'd like to.
But we maintain those plot areas, as far as-
Yes, as far as the mowing and the maintenance, tree removal, things like that. Yes, sir.
Okay. How many plots is that? Do you know?
I do not know that off the top of my head. I can, I can look.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm a little confused here. You're saying that this ordinance would apply to the Catholic-owned portion? Is that correct or not?
We can go back and look at the plot owner, or, excuse me, at the land ownership, because I, I think that was something that was worked out several years ago.
It was.
But I do believe that the property is owned by the city, but the individual plots, just like if I came and bought a plot at Sunset, that plot itself belongs to me, but the land around it.
Well, let me, let me just-
If you put the headstone on your own plot, is Catholic Church on that?
The individual owns their own headstones. So if you bought the plot and put the headstone, you are the owner of the headstone, but the city maintains the cemetery itself.
Why don't we suggest one thing? I'm assuming that the Catholic portion of the cemetery probably precedes the state of Texas.
Yes.
And that this kind of came to be through the, not six, but nine flags out there. So let us do a little bit more of the property and the land grant and the succession of things to the extent we can. I realize once you got into multiple regime changes, some of that may be a little clouded. But let's see if we can find some legacy documents above and beyond the ordinance, just in the, in the, in the deed records.
Well, let me suggest, you do have a deed in 1858, that it's the Catholic section of Oak Grove, and I do believe that there has been a survey of the portion owned by the Catholic Church, so I just-
Yeah, we, we probably need to pull that and anything prior to that as well.
Okay, yeah, and I think, I think it is helpful to look into it. But either way, I think this is a wonderful ordinance, but I don't think it applies to property, but I think it's a great ordinance, and I think, Brad, was it you who, who started this to get-
It's my fault.
I think it's great. I love it.
Thank you.
I just, I just wanted to clarify that part.
I just have a question. Why, what is the rationale behind a height limit of 36 inches all over the place? It's like-
So, as I mentioned, I believe that restriction came into effect when the city was operating Sunset, which is what you consider more of a kind of a modern-style cemetery without the vertical headstones. So I believe that, that restriction carried over once-
But I mean, is there a rational reason for it? I mean, like, oh, we can't mow there, or?
Well, there may be some potential-
The airspace above it you're worried about?
I think more of a-
Sorry.
Potential liability issues or something like that.
Well, let me, let me throw this out, Brad. Having, having been in places with different age cemeteries as well, you did go through later an era which kind of continues where you have a lot more flats versus the vertical, or if you have vertical elements, they're not as tall. I do think some of the intent may have been liability with various types of monuments, things over time, you know, it's not like your typical international building code, things tipping over, probably for safety reasons. But you did have that change where, at one time, you had more vertical elements, and then they started going more to flats. And so I think the problem is, again, you had historical cemetery, more modern ones, and then the two got blended into one, kind of a bad idea.
Well, I, I didn't surprise you, because I did mention this to you last week, so I didn't want to, you know, you know, so I brought this for you, so you could see it.
You know, my original intention, other than, it should be a family's, it's their way of honoring their loved ones, so if they feel like a 20-foot-tall monument, I'm good with it, you know? But, but also, we go to Oak Grove because of the beauty of all the monuments and mausoleums and everything, you know, other than to celebrate the life of somebody we knew, maybe, but, but it's, it's a historic attraction for the city, even in that. So that's kind of what got me into it. I didn't understand why Billy wanted to put, do you want to come up here and describe it, maybe, or something? Is that legal?
Well, hang on, just a minute.
Hang on.
I've got two more in front of me before you-
Oh, okay, okay. But, but I think he had a heartfelt reason for doing what he's doing.
That's all my question.
If you have people that have signed in, Mayor?
I do, yes, I do.
Here.
Mr. App.
Jeff.
Yes.
My name is Jeff App. I live right across the street from this cemetery. I'm intimately acquainted with it. I think the size of the monument limitation really goes counter to the existing cemetery as it stands. There's all sorts, there's dozens and dozens of already monuments that are above, above 60 or above, and so I think it would just, to limit it now to the, that lower heights is kind of backwards thinking. I don't, I've, just my 20 years living across the street from, I don't think there's a single monument that's fallen on anybody, and everybody's dead there anyway, so it doesn't hurt anyone.
That's true.
Anyway, I think it would, pardon my humor, I think it would be fitting to change the ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, Mr. Bradbury.
My name is Charles Bradbury. I, I've been trying to get to Nakadochas my whole life, but I've been here for about 13 years every day, and I'm speaking here tonight. I am, I am a vice president of Friends Historic Nak, and I am chairman of the Nakadochas Historic Preservation Board, but I'm not speaking for that group tonight, although I think most everyone of those people would, would share my sentiments. I, I walk in that cemetery a lot, because it's a beautiful place to walk, and there are dozens and dozens of tall statues in there. I mean, dozens and dozens and dozens, and some of them are pretty new, and some of them are really old, and I think it's the one thing that makes the place so unique. I drove by again today on, just on the trip down here, just to look at it one more time, and the, the, the older, more beautiful statues are nearer downtown in the first part, and, and it's just amazing when you look at them. And that's the reason I'm here tonight, just as a citizen, saying I really support us having the opportunity. Someone said to me, well, maybe they could put too many of them. Well, if you're worried about that, just say each family can put one up five foot tall or something, because nobody probably needs to put up 10 statues on 10 plots in there or something like that. There are ways to make this comfortable, and your community's trusting you because you do, first of all, you do what you say you're going to do, and secondly, because you treat everyone the same. And obviously, we've allowed a lot of people to put those five-foot statues and taller up in there, and I would encourage you to do the same, and I support the ordinance. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Charles.
Okay, Billy.
Well, I can kind of go along with what everyone else has already said. I can say that being Catholic, as Kathleen said, and I'm not sure how far back it goes, it hasn't been checked, there was a, I'm not sure how many years ago, but there was kind of a trade-off. The Catholic Church either owned all of that cemetery, or for sure, the, the middle of it, kind of horseshoes in till you get to those big magnolias, and it stops. And there was a trade made that the Catholic Church would let the city sell plots, I think, in the other parts of the cemetery. They left the Catholic Church keep the middle part, and the trade-off was the land for the perpetual care of the Catholic parks. Now, I'm not sure if that's exactly how it went down, but that's, that's real close. And when it happened, I'm not sure, but there's a long, long history there. And if you're Catholic, you do have the opportunity to buy your plots from the church in the Catholic park, and then if there's any plots left to be bought in the rest of it, you buy them from the city. But we bought our plots there about 20 years ago, and we finally had to use one of them about a month ago. My dad passed away, and we decided to step outside the box a little bit. It's kind of a family history thing, and other cemeteries with our family, we, we ordered a statue of the Virgin Mary. And on the pedestal, the actual Virgin Mary, I think, is three feet tall, but the pedestal that we want to put her on to make it look really nice is going to be marble, and it's going to be five feet tall. And so there, there was the problem. And it would be much appreciated if y'all would pass this, so other families, just like you said earlier, can, they so choose to do something like that in the Catholic park or the other part, they can feel free to do it and won't have to come to a city council meeting to get it done. I'm sure people have better things to do than to discuss headstones at a city council meeting, but it's sure appreciated that y'all were forthwith about getting this on the agenda. If you don't know how much, I appreciate it. My mom couldn't be here, but she appreciates it, and, and I think it'll be an asset to the city, because what we're going to put up is going to be really nice.
Okay. Thank you, Billy, very much.
Thank all of you. I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Let, let me say one thing. I'll make the motion to approve this.
I have something before you make the motion.
Okay.
Okay. All I wanted to clarify is, I'm going to give you a little lesson in Catholicism, that the ground that is already blessed, and that's the reason that the Catholic Church holds on to that blessed ground, so that is why it's owned by the Catholic Church. I just thought I'd clarify that, and you all can look and see, but that's what that surveyed off ground is, is blessed ground. So that's why it's important to, you know, to know, because you wouldn't want to impose rules on church grounds about what statues can be put up on a church ground or on any other religious-owned property, so I thought I would share that part about the blessed ground. So, there you go. Turn.
Okay. I'd like to make the motion to approve item 6A, but I'd also like for, for the city to do the research to where we know exactly what's owned by the Catholic Church, what we own, find the agreement for the perpetuating care of, of the Catholic portion, and the rest of it would be the city's. But we need to, while we're doing these ordinances, and I'm not talking about just cemeteries, we're doing lots of new ordinances. We're cleaning up stuff that hadn't been changed in over 100 years. So we just need to clean it up, find out where everything is, find out exactly how we got there, so in another 50 or 75 years, somebody's not going to be saying, well, this happened or this happened. It's a, we'll have it on a piece of paper, and we'll have it, it'll be recorded in our minutes to where we know exactly what everything is. So I made the motion for approval. I'll second it.
I have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 6B, is a public hearing. Discuss and consider action on historic overlay case number HO 2025-01 regarding a request to apply historic overlay designation on one parcel of land, approximately .24 acres, plus or minus in size, more particularly described by Nakadochas Central appraisal district parcel 27682, and is located at 1301 Regay Street, Nakadochas, Texas. Jessica.
Mayor, Council, Jessica Sal, Community Services Director. I don't know if you all could tell, but I did not write that item. Our planning, our planning director did. But our item today is a historic overlay case. We have not done one of these as a staff in a while, so just, sorry. But so this item is discuss and consider action on this historic overlay case. Just as a reminder, since we haven't done one of these in a while, this is started by the property owner. Staff does not go out and find these properties, it's started by a property owner. In this case, it's Ms. Isabella Baker. Her father is the property owner, and she is the applicant, requested to put this property under historic overlay. The City of Nakadochas has five historic overlay districts, and then we have about 30 to 35 properties that are individually designated. So they don't fall within a district, they kind of are set apart, but they still have those historic overlay protections. This property is 1301 Regay Street, and it's right at the corner of Bailey Avenue and Regay. It's the Taylor Medical Office Building, built in 1952, and it's a really great example of mid-century modern architecture. Properties that are at least 50 years old can be considered historic, and sadly, 1952 definitely meets that. It used to be the 1800s was kind of our marker. But so it was built in 1952 by the architect Rayford Stripling, who was pretty famous in Nakadochas, in Augustine, and all over East Texas. And it really shows the area shift from residential to institutional use, medical use in that neighborhood. When applying for historic overlay designation, the applicant is asked to give us a big summary of the property, do their research, submit maps, drawings, photographs, and I will say this application, far and away, has the most research of any of them that I've seen lately. They definitely did their due diligence and turned everything into us. I had many pages of reading to do, which was wonderful. For these applications, it first goes to our Historic Landmark Preservation Committee for consideration, then it goes on to our Planning and Zoning Commission, and then finally to city council for approval. We also ask that the applicant decide which criteria they're applying under. In our Chapter 50 of our Historic Preservation Ordinances, there are six different criteria. This applicant said they were applying under criteria 1, 4, and 5, which is possesses its significance in history, architecture, archaeology, or culture, embodies the distinctive characteristics of a type or period of architecture, or a method of construction, and represents the work of a master designer, builder, or craftsman. And there are some photographs here in your packet. You can also see the map, and then our criteria are laid out as well. HLPC met on July 7th and recommended approval, and then Planning and Zoning met on July 14th and recommended approval, and I am bringing this forth to y'all today for consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have after the public hearing.
Good. Thank you, Jessica. Okay, this is a public hearing. We will open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience have any comments? There being none, we will close the public hearing. Any discussion with council?
That was an impressive set of historical, and archaeological, and architectural, and everything that you sent us. I was really impressed. Thank you.
And the vast majority of that was completed by the applicant, so they deserve all the credit. They did a great job doing all the research.
Yeah, definitely. No questions? Are you ready for a motion?
What does that mean for the future of that place? Like, if you, if someone else buys it?
Yeah, so that, if approved by council, this property would be put under historic overlay, which means it's subject to everything in Chapter 50 of our Historic Preservation Ordinance. Things like if they want to alter the outside of the building, they first have to come before HLPC, they are now eligible for historic restoration grants. It also, it doesn't prevent somebody from ever demolishing a building, but it gives them a lot of hoops they would have to jump through. They really have to show that the building is completely falling apart, or it's outside of a period of significance. It makes it very, very hard to do, where if it was just any other building that had no ordinance over it, as long as you get the right permits, you could tear it down. So it protects it, it allows them to get some grants, and really make sure that anything they do to the building is reviewed and make sure it's appropriate.
And Brad, since I do this at least once every meeting, it also means that if there's a statue of you outside the building, it can't be taller than 60 inches.
You would have to have approval for that, too.
And I was born around that time, anyway, so I'm a little historic at this moment. Just not a building.
Are you ready for a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I move that we approve item 6B as written.
Second.
Third.
I have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item, six C is a public hearing. Discuss and consider action on zoning case zero in two thousand twenty-five dash zero nine regarding a zone change from, uh, L one, light industrial, to R four, multifamily district for two parcels of land approximately point six-four acres plus or minus in size, more particularly described by Nacogdoches Central Appraisal District Parcels two one five four nine six and two three two one eight, and generally located west of Bremont Street, approximately five hundred feet north of the intersection of West Cox and Bremont Streets, Nacogdoches, Texas.
Right.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Juan Palet, City Planner. So the subject properties front Bremen Street are a little over half an acre and are currently vacant. The properties are located in a transitional area between residential zone and uses to the west and light industrial zones mixed with commercial uses to the east. The subject properties are within a designated FEMA flood zone. All new structures in the area are required to be constructed at least two feet above the base flood elevation level. The properties are adjacent to several homes in the outside historic district and near the Virginia Avenue Historic District to the south. The future land use plan designates the subject properties as rural development. This future land use category is described as sparsely populated areas with limited development, and also includes areas that are gradually transitioning into urban uses and development. While rezoning could align with the transitional intent of this category, its appropriateness depends on whether it's seen as a logical extension of nearby development or an intensity beyond what's envisioned for the area. This is a picture of the subject property on the left and the train tracks across the street. And the picture on the left is a picture of commercial properties to the north along Bremen and the adjacent residential property to the south on Bremen. This slide shows the types of uses within the two-hundred-foot notification area. Staff sent out nine public meeting notices to those property owners, and fifteen noticed postcarst property owners within two-hundred and five-hundred feet. Staff received a total of eighteen response forms regarding this request, one in support and seventeen in opposition. Staff coordinated a neighborhood meeting at the Recreation Center on behalf of the applicant to receive input from surrounding property owners. Twenty-eight of the neighboring residents attended the meeting with concerns of compatibility with the historic character of the neighborhood, flooding and erosion, increased traffic, limited parking, and general safety concerns. The majority of the attending attendees were generally opposed to the rezone. Of the opposed, four responses were submitted by property owners within the required two-hundred-foot notification area. Because opposition within this area exceeds twenty percent of the land area, the request is now subject to the twenty percent, which requires a supermajority by City Council. This map shows the properties that are of the opposing landowners highlighted in red, totaling approximately thirty percent, thirty-three percent. Staff believes that the key condition in question is compatibility. From a land use perspective, the R four zoning introduces a residential land use that is transitional and less intense than the existing industrial zoning. However, introducing multifamily housing in a historically sensitive single-family area may not reflect the neighborhood's character. P and Z met on the fourteenth of July and voted unanimously to deny the request. And this concludes my presentation, and the applicant would like to address counsel at this time.
Okay. We'll, we'll open the, uh, this is a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing now. Yes. Whoever the applicant is can come up.
Okay. My name is Rayshawn Lathan, and, uh, I just came here today to, uh, let the council know and the mayor, uh, that me and my wife, Christie Lathan, I'm Rayshawn Lathan and Christie Lathan. We are here to get, uh, Bremen, Bremen Street, our two parcels, two one five and four nine six, two three two one eight, to get them rezoned from light industrial to R four for multifamily. Because we feel like if the, uh, city is going to be growing, we want to be a part of it and be able to take areas of the city that's not so great and, uh, use the highest and best use, uh, concept on it. Okay, these are our two parcels. And, uh, we know it's in an area that's, you know, right next to this neighborhood in the back and on the side. But we, we feel like where it's located in the city, it'd be great for tenants. Okay? You can live downtown. You can shop. You can shop on the, uh, Brick Street. You're right beside the police station, fire department. You can eat at Auntie Pasta in Clear Springs. You can go to the right and go to the Plaza, uh, for Brooks Brothers, and you can work out at Planet Fitness. So we just, we just looked at the area. It has a nice neighborhood up on the hill. We understand that. We understand all their concerns. We've been trying to address their concerns, and maybe we can get that done today. Okay, this just shows a few employers around the area. This, this slideshow.
Only be available for everybody to see.
It's pretty long. Okay. So these are some employers. Here at the top and on the side is kind of the idea we're thinking about that type of construction. And we would only, you know, we would go with whatever the city and architecture would, you know, the municipality say, you know, how many units we could possibly build or not build, you know? Some of the neighbors' concerns and oppositions are these six items here. Compatibility with historic character of the neighborhood, flooding and erosion, increased traffic, general safety concerns with, with regards to the railroad, tenants and rent affordability, and safety, and increased crime. Okay? So this is kind of, this is what the area looks like where the property is located. Quick, quick glance. Uh, this is to the left of our property. And then to the right of the property. This is what it looks like, and the railroad in the front. Okay, the current zoning L one, these are some of the businesses, uh, that could be in the area by right. Unfortunately, we didn't want to do any one of these. We, we want to, uh, for like less impact and everything, we, we like the small apartment building concept, garden apartments, uh, for that area. This is kind of seeing what it looks like now and kind of what the building could look like on the property or near it. Okay. We've, we've retained a professional design group with experience in the northeast Texas area, and we would be relying on them to, uh, guide us on the construction. Flooding and erosion concerns, uh, again, that's going to be the engineers, the engineering firm. They would be doing surveys and topographic engineering and architecture development. By no means am I qualified, you know? So we're going to hire the experts. And as far as increased traffic concerns, you know, um, when I think about that, you, you know, a living, a place to live is less tense on traffic than if it was a business there where you have trucks coming in and out every day, you know, suppliers or, uh, you know, people need ample parking to get to a business. But, you know, as far as apartments, you know, a small apartment building, it would be less traffic concerns. So, uh, the general safety concerns was the railroad being right in front of the property. And, uh, we got a statement from Mr. Colin Corey. And he said that he was, you know, his, since it's not their property, it's our property, they don't have any say or recommendation specific to the use across the street. He said, "My recommendation is to follow any guidelines and rules set by the municipality's code and standards." And so we would be, again, relying on it. Expert engineers and developers to maintain, you know, the appropriate setbacks that the municipality, the municipality codes and standards, to follow those. And we would also consider additional safety recommendations such as fencing, you know, like making an honest effort to make it safe as possible. Okay, and, uh, tenants and rent affordability, uh, it was said that in the last meeting that, uh, we don't want any low-income, you know, apartments around here or, you know, they seem to have, the neighbors seem to have a problem with that, and I understand that. But we cannot, you know, discriminate. And our plan was never to have low-income housing at all. We, we're not getting any type of low-income financing to build low-income housing. It was, it was just the neighbor's concern, so I'm addressing it. Okay. So number six, safety and increased crime. So we tried to get some, pull some files from the local police department, and they gave us a tenure review of, of, you know, incidents that happened in the area. And down at the bottom, where you see welfare check, minor incident, these were some of the, these were some of the, uh, actual areas where they, we had problems in the area. And, um, I don't think any of that would change if we built the apartment building. And, uh, hopefully it would make the area better. And so this is a quote from Mr. Randy Johnson. And we seen it that night on TV. So we said, hey, maybe we can get in and get something done. So thank you for listening to my presentation, and I hope you consider letting us, uh, get, getting it zoned to R four multifamily so we can get to work.
Thank you, Mr. Lathan. Okay, next is, uh, Ms. Anna Johnson.
First of all, I want to say that that was a pretty well re, uh, prepared presentation by them. They're clearly very intelligent and very smart. We live just up the hill. In fact, right up the hill from this property. Our hill is sand. Water rushes down from Forbes Street to our house. We've had to build a berm because it rushes to, to destroy our foundation. We're very concerned about the taking more trees away, putting in more concrete, and then our hillside just kind of washing away with this kind of development. It does not fit with the historical nature of our neighborhood. I realize that Bremont is a bit of an eyesore. I realize that. But I don't think these apartments are what needs to be placed there. I don't like the, um, the increased traffic, the increased flooding that will happen. The city just put a parking lot there and took away a bunch of trees. And so the more trees you take away, the less soil there is to catch the water. As it is now, when I, when it rains, I avoid that street. There is so much water on that street that I avoid it. The trains are so active there that I'm concerned about children. I know that Festival Park is right across the street, but having children in that area, it, it's so dangerous. It is a very active railroad, whatever you call it. And, um, so I'm concerned about it being a really good neighborhood to put apartments in. So you're going to hear more of this from the neighbors. These are all the concerns that have been brought up before. But we really oppose this because we don't think it's right for the neighborhood. We know they've done a tremendous job, and they look like they really know how to do what they want to do. I just don't think it's the right thing for this neighborhood. Thank you for listening.
Okay, next, this is Mr. John Watt. Let's see if you can do as good as your wife. I doubt it.
Mr. Mayor, uh, council members, my name is John Watt. I live at three zero six Weaver Street, which is directly up the hill from where these apartments want to be built. Now, it's zoned light industrial for a reason. Number one, it's in the flood plain. In order to have as many apartments as wanted in the, the entire point six-five acres will be covered with roof or parking lot. That means none of the water has a chance to soak in. Point six-five acres with one inch of rain, that's going to mean seventeen thousand six-hundred-and-fifty gallons of water will be put into the street. That's just one inch. Three inches will be, that would make it over fifty thousand gallons going into the street. In addition to the water, it's already there. There are times now when the street is closed off by the city because of mudslides or too much water there. Impossible to pass through it. Number two, where will the children play? Will they play in the railroad yard where someone just two months ago, a Union Pacific employee, lost his life? He was trained on how to deal with safety issues around trains. The children in this apartment complex will not be trained that. Do we want to lose another life because of that? Number three, retaining wall. Since our house is directly above it, they're going to have to dig out part of the steeply sloped hill in order to make a flat surface. If they don't do a proper retaining wall, that whole hill will slide down, bringing our house and yard with it. Number four, it's a gateway to historical district. It's not congruent with the use, uh, with the historical area. Number five, they know how the, they knew how the property was zoned when they bought it. If they wanted to build an apartment, they should have bought property that was already zoned for apartments. The idea of walking to Farmer's Market or downtown, uh, Nacogdoches is not feasible from there. I've tried walking that myself. It's almost impossible to walk safely from the Farmer's Market to this location. There's no sidewalk going across the railroad tracks. It's just road and railroad tracks. It's a very busy switching yard there. The city council in the past has stated they want more single-family residences. Don't we have enough apartments already in Nacogdoches? In fact, there's a huge apartment complex being built right now at the corner of Austin and, uh,
Pearl.
Pearl Street. Just a couple of months ago, Ms. Ruth Carroll was, uh, recognized for her fight to improve zoning laws here in Nacogdoches. Let's make her proud by protecting the integrity of the Virginia Avenue Nettie Marshall Historical Area. Zoning was set up to protect historical neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Okay, next is, uh, Ms. Carol E. Walsh, Walsh?
Y'all gotta forgive me. I was in the garden, and, and Caprice said, "Do you know what time it is?" So anyway.
You're fine.
So forgive my parents. Yes, uh, I own five lots on Bremont, and, uh, the corner lot is still empty. And, uh, then it's my house, and then it's my little candle and incense shop, and then it's a house that I rent occasionally, or my sister comes and stays in it. But I have lived there for a long time, and I have done my best. But I have lived there for a long time, and I have done my best to improve this street. My husband passed in December tenth, but I have now found a yard man. So, my intention is to make all five lots beautiful. I've just started on it, though. And, uh, it, it, it really is bad when it rains. When it rains, sometimes I'll go upstairs and, and just sit and watch the cars, uh, get, you know, stranded and stuff like that. And, uh, I know that it was industrial, but, like I said, I'm trying to do my best because I have a historic overlay over my houses. My, my residence is like a hundred and thirty-five years old. And then the other two houses, uh, well, the little cottage was built in nineteen twenty-four, and then the middle house was built in, ooh, uh, about nineteen hundred. Anyway, I have overlays over them, and it was because I know I'm not going to last forever. And so, when I'm gone, I want them to be saved. And, um, that hill is something. I have water that gushes down, my whole driveway goes away, and I have to put it back, and then it goes away. And it's just not going to be good. Uh, we have talked, you know, in the neighborhood, and, uh, if it was a single-family home, we'd be all for it. If it was a little shop, we'd be all for it. But changing to multiple housing, I'm so afraid that zoning will go like dominoes. And when it's easy for one person, then it's easy for the second and easier for the third. And so, uh, these are lovely people, and we want them to have success. But I wish they would change it to maybe single-family or something commercial. Thank you, and please excuse me.
Okay, uh, Ms. Register?
I have to take responsibility for Carol's.
She, she notified me.
Sorry. My husband, Phil, and I moved into, uh, 521 Weaver about almost two and a half years ago. But my relationship with that house started when I was seventeen. I would move to Nacogdoches, and that's one of the first houses that I saw that I knew I had to have. And it's taken me many years to get there. But we love it, and it needs a lot of work. As they mentioned, erosion is a huge issue. We live kind of up on a little rise, a hill, hill. And, um, our house is slowly sliding, sort of down. And we've got, um, erosion, there's always dirt in our yard that's, you know, and we have work, we've got to do with that, and we know that. However, I wanted to live in that house partially because it was in a historic neighborhood. It's a very simple, old house. It was built in eighteen ninety-six or seven, depending upon the date you go back. So, it's old, and it needs a lot of work. But I've, since moving there, I have seen the school system cut down huge oak trees across Weaver from our house there. It's, it's across the street from Nettie Marshall. Some of them needed to come down legitimately. They were dead. But a couple of them were these beautiful, healthy trees that were hundreds of years old. And they were gone, you know, they're gone. And that happened right after they put up a sign, the Historic Society did, of acknowledging there had been a fi- a, a war, a battle or something that took place in that area. And then right after that, they went and cut down this huge oak tree. That's, that's one thing that's okay, I guess. That was, that was like for physical beauty. It was pretty, it, it's great, it had a park like it, you know. Cutting down the trees on Bremond and Cox to put in the parking lot, that's a whole different issue. Because not only does, does it affect runoff and, uh, from what I've been told, it was a brown field there. It also, uh, took out some of the barrier for the trains that come down on the train. And so, now, every time, and, you know, we adjust to it, we didn't mind. We, we got used to the sound of the trains, although now our windows are all shaking in our old house with those old windows in it and, and stuff like that. So, I mean, that was, that was, that was that. But we've got to preserve these areas. And I know our neighborhood does need work. We all, the houses over there could use, or, or most of them, not all of them. And, and we need to work with the city and work with the historic preservation to, to try to make that at one of, you know, we want, I'm proud of the city. I knew when I moved here, I wasn't, this was home for me. I graduated from high school, and I came here the next day, and that was it. My sister, my parents, we all ended up moving here. You know, this is home. And I'm proud of it, and I want to see those areas preserved, and I want to see that. You know, we care about that. And a lot of our neighborhood, I think we do care. And we do know it needs work. We'll get there. But that's just that issue, okay? Now, I'll hurry. However, uh, traffic is a huge problem. The, uh, when you turn off of Main Street across from Lone Star, there are two entrance ways that you can come onto Bremond. And you get traffic coming and going on that, and there's an eighteen-wheeler parked by the more, is it the plumbing, I think it's a plumbing supply. And, I mean, that is a big issue. And right, you know, this is like two lots down, I guess, from that, that they're talking about putting in these apartments, and that's going to bring in more traffic. I have had eighteen-wheelers in my yard twice because we live on a sharp corner. You know, in the middle of the night, stuck. And so, I mean, and this is only going to add more to that. It's going to bring in more traffic. It's not so much, you know, um, we do have problems with crime in that area, but that's not, I don't think apartments are going to necessarily affect that as much as I think it's, it's these other real issues. We, uh, you know, I've seen the stop sign near our house. It's, it's probably been taken out at least four times, maybe five, since we moved there. That's a big thing, you know? And we're talking about, we, there are a couple of children in that neighborhood right now, but not a lot. I worked for Children's Services all my life. I, I don't want to see, you know, I don't want to create more of a problem that could be, uh, affect that, affect children and their health and their safety. And they've talked, the couple that had this plan, they have talked about gearing that towards families, gearing it towards children, trying to, and, and, and that's a very limited area to do everything. It's a great idea. It's not appropriate historically, and it's, it's just not, I don't think it's, we have so many apartments in this, uh, town right now that are vacant. And like someone mentioned earlier, you know, they're building large apartment complexes. And I don't know, uh, if, I don't know at this point myself personally what the need for additional housing is. I just take you so much with that area.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much for my time.
Thank you, yes, ma'am. Okay, I don't think there's anybody else, uh, okay.
Hi, Brandy Cartwright, um, 2806 North Pecan Street. I don't live in this neighborhood, so I'm not necessarily addressing this specifically, but, um, I hear a lot of fear about the, the apartment, small, very small apartment go, um, going in. And I would just want to encourage everybody to drive around. I live three blocks away from a two-apartment building, or three, three apartment buildings. And one of them, when I moved in, was very rundown. People were very concerned about, you know, living near it. But a lot of those things can be addressed by ordinances, I believe. So, a new owner came into that apartment complex. They replaced the lights, they put lights around the building. They painted the building, they made it look nice. I have no concerns living with small children three blocks away from an apartment building. We have them all down Mound Street. We have neighborhoods next to apartment buildings. So, um, I think anybody who's concerned about it should drive around and go see those neighborhoods that have this already because we do have a housing crisis here in Nacogdoches. We need more housing. And while single-family housing is obviously needed, the two big, you know, uh, neighborhoods that were supposed to be built aren't being built now, the ones out, I think, on Park, Park Street. But not everybody wants a single-family housing, especially in a college town. I have people, um, that I know of who work with students at the university who can't find housing near the university for volleyball players, for, you know, students who would gladly walk or, uh, ride their bikes to the university who want to live downtown. I know multiple people who want to live downtown, and there is no space down there. So, we need to figure out a way to solve some of this. But I do have a question. Can some of the concerns about the looks of an apartment building or a duplex or whatever multifamily housing, um, people are wanting to put in, can those concerns about, uh, the structure fitting into a historic district be solved by ordinances? I'm fairly certain the answer is yes, but I would like a concrete answer for that because that's a big thing that gets brought up every single time, is what's it going to look like? Is it not going to look like the neighborhood? Um, and I, I'm fairly certain when I have looked this up in other cities that they have ordinances that describe what a structure has to look like from the outside so that it matches the neighborhood, and that is something that we can do. Thanks.
I, I think the issue is going from light industrial to, to R4. I don't think it's necessarily what the, uh, property looks like. That's my understanding. If somebody else was to correct me, so. Anyway, anybody else have any, okay, Ms. Latham?
Hello, my name is Kristy Latham, and we reside at 204 County Road 120 in Nacogdoches, Texas. I wanted to come up here and take the opportunity to just address some concerns and misconceptions that I heard. Um, the first thing I wanted to say was that on Bremen Street, there is a huge concrete slab. And while we've owned this property for over a year, uh, I have never come to the property and seen mud on that concrete slab there with regards to the concern about erosion and so forth. Next thing is, while the property, the apartments that we want to build there, we're planning on two-bedroom, two-bath, to, uh, really cater to young, well, first of all, retirees perhaps, uh, young people, graduate students. We're anticipating an increased population with the expansion of SFA with UT, uh, as well. Um, and so, we're not really anticipating a place for children. I know there was mention about children. But with young people, if they're doing what they're supposed to, children can be a part of them, right? So, um, yes, that, children can come along as well. But we're really trying to cater to, uh, young folks and students and, um, even retirees as well. Another thing I wanted to point out is that, you know, I think that Bremen Street is an ignored area. I think that it does need a lot of attention, whether it be from the city or the people that live in that area, the people that care about that area, or the, uh, um, the commercial properties, the owners. It does need attention, and I think one of the things about growth and development, it, it brings attention to an area. So, uh, if, there are some things that are out of our control and even out of the neighbors' control with regards to the infrastructure for flooding, um, traffic issues. These are concerns that are there now, but they need attention. How do we bring attention to it? By developing. And I think that our project really could help to bring the attention that's needed for that area, get the Texas DOT's attention for that area so that we can possibly get better infrastructure as well. I think those were, another thing that I wanted to speak about was, you know, we have been to Antipastas, for example, in Clara Springs numerous times, and they're located right next to the, uh, railroad, uh, as well. And we enjoy our meals there, and our wine glasses don't fall on the ground. And, you know, we want to create a place that people can live. Um, I've even consulted some, um, engineers, civic engineers as far as, uh, Connecticut in New England area where they build next to railroad tracks all the time. And, you know, we can do the same thing here. And we actually have a lot of distance between where our property is located and where the actual railroad tracks are. So, I think those are the things that I wanted to address. I think Ray did a great job of addressing what is already allowed in this industrial-zoned area. And whether, and he spoke about how even if we have businesses there now, it's going to bring traffic, commercial traffic is by far more than residential traffic. So, you know, we just really appreciate you all hearing us out. And we appreciate all the neighbors, uh, making their concerns known, and we really did try to address your concerns the best that we can. And we appreciate, uh, our neighbor from far away that came and also spoke before me and just give some support for what we're trying to do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll go to discussion.
Do you all mind if I start?
No, go ahead.
I, I have, I have a few questions. My, my mic is not very loud, there's some issue with it, so. I don't know who the, who the appropriate person is. Do we have anybody from engineering?
Mike.
You, I think we can get Case on if we have to, but Mike's here, of course, for infrastructure and, and development. He's the catch-all.
Mike, uh, first question, uh, relates to some, someone that spoke during the public hearing. We did not build a parking lot in that area.
Oh, as far as the history, I believe that's Union Pacific property.
And I, I think the school district may have built something, but the city did not. I just want to be clear that we did not do that.
At that particular occasion, I believe so.
It's NIST.
Sure.
Uh, but I just wanted to be clear, we did not do that.
I, I looked over at one when that was mentioned to, to, to ask about some of the history. I am the newest person here, but I, I don't recall that.
So, this may be a question for you and/or Jerry. What does the supermajority require so everyone on council knows what to expect when we come to make a decision? Twenty percent rule has been met, that requires a supermajority. What does that mean in general? What does it mean since we only have four members here tonight?
So, per the language of our ordinance, that's section 118, 141B. It requires a favorable vote of three-fourths of all members of the city council, since there are only four here, and require all four to approve it. But it requires three-fourths of all members, and that includes those that are not present.
So, if there was just a simple quorum of us here, it would not be possible?
It would not be possible. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can, can I follow up on the supermajority question?
Sure, for sure, go ahead.
So, I know that's changing. I have just a couple of questions, I'm, ask them right now. It is the, it goes by the percentage of the land surrounding it, or?
That's correct. It's, it's a land area percentage.
Okay. And then, um, when does it change to sixty percent, at what date?
The cha- again, it's, it, it, it's not exactly applied as it is today. Again, not pertaining, would not pertain to this particular case or decision tonight. But, um, legislation effective September one would change some zone change requests to a sixty percent threshold if there were zoning protests.
If there were what?
If there were protests to be eligible. It would require sixty percent of the land area as opposed to twenty if it increases residential density.
Right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, now, sorry.
Okay, you can stay. This is a, this is a process question.
Sure.
So, I, I know that I've been asked several times, this property's in my ward. I've been asked by a number of residents. Okay, planning and zoning said no to this, 4-0. Why does it still come to city council? Can you briefly address what the process is in general so everyone in the audience and watching online knows how that works?
Sure. So, for zoning decisions, it's spelled out in, uh, section 118 of our city ordinances. Um, any zone change requests do follow a two-reading process. Any zone change requests do follow a two-reading process, two public hearing process, one at Planning and Zoning Commission. That decision does carry to the council regardless of whether it's an action to approve the request or to deny the request, that still goes to council and receives council consideration for final action in all zone change requests. There are some decisions that remain with planning and zoning. There's preliminary plats that planning and zoning can authorize and approve that don't make it to council. There's even final plats that reach that stage. In fact, we may have some plan development items that would go up to planning and zoning. Some of that might, may not carry to council if it receives council approval after the fact. So there's some variations, but when it comes to zone change requests, council is final authority, council is final action regardless.
Okay, one last process question. What are council's options as far as action tonight?
Council can approve the request, which we carry that zone change request for entitlement. Council can deny the request. What that does is establish a twelve-month restriction on any future requests of the same type. So if the applicant were to try and request again or resubmit an application for a zone change to R4 from I1, they would not be able to do that for at least twelve months. If they were to submit an application for a request for a lower-density residential zone change, for instance, in R3 and R2 and R1, they would be able to do that without delay. If they were to submit a request for anything above the density they've requested, which is B1, B2, medical, they would not be able to do that. Anything above the density of the application being requested, they would be limited for twelve months to apply for that.
I missed one question that you brought up while I... What types of residences can be built in the industrial category? Are there any?
There are no residential allowed, no residential developments allowed in I1.
Okay, so I guess my next questions are for the applicants. So during your presentation, you mentioned that you had interest in making changes to suit the opposition that you faced. So you had the neighborhood meeting and faced opposition. What changes did you make between then and planning and zoning?
Well, we made a list of their concerns and then we just tried to answer the questions and that was in the six or seven questions I did on the presentation. And from that fir-, you talking about from the first meeting, right? The first meeting. From that meeting, we started to look at the safety concerns because I mean, knowing nobody getting hurt.
Right.
Start looking at the safety concerns and then we started contacting the railroad and start trying to look at statistics on the crime rate and what's going on in the area because there was a lot of, a lot of things to address. A lot of questions on safety.
So you answered questions. My question, though, is what changes did you make to your application? Or have you proceeded with the exact same application?
I kept the same application. Said I was gonna go all the way through the process. City council.
So, for sure.
Listening, I'm hearing you saying, what did we change about our plan? Okay, after listening to the neighbors. What we changed about our plan is just considering that, you know what, we don't know what is going to be allowed as far as density, what the city is going to allow. So when it comes to multi-unit, that could be four units, five, six, eight, twelve, and so on. So we're not in the position to make any changes to say what we want or what we will have because we have not been cleared for a multi-unit. So getting it rezoned multi-unit allows us to now step forward and now let's go ahead and have a meeting with the city and see what are the density requirements that are permitted? What would be sensible? What would be rational engineering-wise and so forth? So we're, we are open-minded to the idea that we don't want to, we want a density that would fit with the area. So we would be looking at a lower density as opposed to say if they say, oh, you can have a hundred units. Well, maybe that would not be appropriate even if we can have it. So that's where our mind is. Does that kind of answer your question?
It does, but it leads me to another one. So I'm trying to consider all of, all the facts here. I know you've had meetings, you've had pre-development meetings with our staff, correct? And I'm sure that at some point someone told you to look at the history of what the council has approved, right?
Uh, no.
So you've done all of this research, you spent money on property, you knew what it was zoned when you purchased it, you're coming through the process. I'm just trying to figure out, at what point do you hear that the neighbors are saying, maybe we don't want R4 in this neighborhood?
During the first meeting.
So that started with the very first one?
That was the biggest, you know, the first meeting and then it followed up at the second meeting.
And then at the Planning and Zoning Commission, those commissioners asked you these same questions. They said, when you're considering these things, would you consider something other than R4?
I don't, I would like to go through the process and see what the council says before I consider that. Obviously, we probably, we have, but our goal was to get R4 and that's what we want the council to be able to vote on and determine before we even consider that, you know, because that was, that was the goal, that was the mission.
So what I'm hearing is we're going forward with what we want regardless of what anyone says as long as the council goes along with it?
No. We want it to provide multi-family housing in the area because we have, we want to use a higher and better use concept. You got point-six-four of an acre, two lots. I believe I could get more houses on that than two houses in the area. It's an in-town property. I believe in-town property should bring people in town. Businesses in town, they need people to support them. If I go put up, I can put up a single-family house anywhere outside the city, but a multi-family house is good for in-town, for in-town and that's why, that's why we went for that. As opposed to the lower-density, we just wanted to try to go for that. We understand what the neighbors have said, we consider everything the neighbors, you know, what they've said, we try to address it, you know?
You tried to answer the question but not change anything?
That, that, no, that's incorrect. I would go for a lower-density but still be multi-family. If I could get two fourplexes on the properties, that would be great as opposed to just one or two single-family homes.
Okay.
You know?
Thank you. That's all my questions.
So council member Chad, we want to leave you with the impression that we really did consider what the neighbors said and their concerns and we want to leave you with the impression that we're considerate. But at the same time, we cannot chase multiple cats like it gets crazy. So we have to focus on what we're actually trying to do here in the application that we submitted because a new request requires a new application. And so, you know, it's important for us to go through the process despite, you know, has anyone else done it before? Are you sure you can do it? And questioning ourselves, we have to go through the process and that's what we're doing because nothing comes that's new unless someone does it. And so that's what we're trying to do. At the same time, I can attest to say, you know, my husband, he's been researching other options in case this doesn't work, right? Other commercial opportunities in case this doesn't work. Yes, obviously, we're gonna consider that, but right now, we are pursuing this to the best of our ability. And I think also people don't understand that there is a process to every, like, one of the slides that we had was like, there's like four processes, four steps. We're just at the first part. The first part is rezoning. Once we get the rezoning, then we go forward and start meeting with the city engineers and all of those things. We cannot put the cart before the horse kind of situation, but we really want you to understand that we are, we are considerate, we're taking everything into consideration. There's no route that we will make unless it is approved by the municipalities and the engineering, engineers and experts and so forth, so yes.
So I appreciate all of your commentary, I really do. Y'all have put time and effort into this and I don't want to minimize that. But for me, what I'm seeing is that it's what we're doing, nothing else. We aren't flexible to change unless the council says no.
Well, I did speak with...
Let me finish. If you had intentions of working with the neighbors and being good neighbors, you would consider options before you got to this point. And that's, that's my perspective on it. I've sat on the council for several years now and I've gone along with changes to R4 when it has been in the best interest of the city. But you have a compelling case from a lot of people that have said, this is, this is not right for this neighborhood. And if you were to come back and say, okay, well, we've changed our minds, we'd like to do something a little bit different, not just less density but a lower zoning category, you might walk out of here with an approval.
Did speak with the zoning director regarding can we present other options? And it was told that we need to, that would require another application, so...
Correct, absolutely it would. But if, if we don't approve this tonight, you can only choose those options unless you want to do R4 again, you're gonna have to wait a year. And I'm sure they presented those options to you. Okay, I'm finished.
I don't think that's true.
R4 or above would have to wait a year if we deny, correct?
R4 or above, no.
That's what I said.
Anything less.
Anything less.
Could be done.
So R3 could be?
R2 and so on, but not B2, not B1.
And we would still have to submit an application and go through the entire process again either way.
Right.
Yes, so...
We're dealing with industrial 1 to R4. That's what's right.
That's all we can do today.
I have a question for Mike New, so thank you. This is just a general question, Mike. You know, we, I know we deal so much, I mean, you and I deal all the time with drainage and erosion and all that. And it really concerns me, you know, having that ledge, you know, and people's property starting to slip. What can, what can we do as a city to think through these kinds of planning and where we need to have trees? And I know we're gonna start thinking about, go ahead.
Council members, your focus on floodplain management, specifically site development?
It is not on this particular property. It is just in general because, you know, they've already had, they've already talked about NISD paving over an area that may have increased flooding. How do we go about this? Or will we have a time that we'll start addressing it as a city, as a whole?
Well, the only thing I will say is this, we have things on the books that historically were probably not being applied.
Okay.
Down to silt fences, down to site development permits, down to grading permits. I can tell you we're doing that. I can also tell you in some cases, we've also had pushback. Actually, we've had significant pushback. Just a general comment, and this is probably, you notice, I do not attend P&amp;Z meetings, ever, anywhere. I try to stay up here in the big picture for a reason because, yes, back in the day I did work in planning, I'll deny that under oath. And I'm not a huge advocate of zoning. I'm a huge advocate of compatible land use and things that function and trying to mitigate flooding, other things like that on the front end, not on the back end. The only thing I would almost just suggest is one thing that we do do, obviously, if someone's purchased the property, there's only so much we can do if they've purchased it. But I would highly encourage kind of in general, the general approach for anyone looking is to, but even before purchasing, because we're zoned, is to take, even if you weren't zoned, I would say the same thing. Due diligence before purchase and entitlement, that includes entitlements, having an option, those things like that, and to go through a more vetted, vetted process just in terms of on that side. Now, I also understand when you get small parcels or people that have been doing this for the first time, that's, you know, if they're not large developers, they're not used to that. However, that can obviate some of the issues. Now, in terms of your question, how do we fix, how do you fix topography? See, you start getting private property next to private property, inherited topography, things that may have been done a hundred years ago, sides of hills dug out. Unfortunately, there's not a clean answer that the city can usually be involved in fixing. That usually does fall on the private side and it would probably fall on, on multiple sides in terms of, you know, if someone's on the high side of a hill and it's gonna, it's gonna go, they probably have to spend on retaining wall. On the low side, they also can't, you know, flood an adjacent neighbor. And this is also coming from being in the floodplain or working at three cities in Galveston County, one of them twice. As a general rule, you know, you, you can't transmit more water or accelerate more water on a neighbor. So those are the things we are looking at. We're also looking at cases probably that in other parcels or other developments where, you know, detaining water was not something that was probably applied the same way that if we followed our code more specifically and historically that it was done. So we are doing those things. We've even had pushback on some of the topography issues where we're asking for that at a certain stage. We're gonna be bringing you some other changes in the future that Mike's been working on where our code historically was supposed to ask for topography even at the plating stage and it probably should have been at the site development stage on some of the detail. But it does need to be done. It does need to be done before the grading work occurs. So, you know, you've went through a lot of code cleanup already, you're gonna get more. Some people will probably complain and say it's gotten too technical and it's gotten too arduous or more expensive. And we're gonna say, well, it's gotta be done at some time to prevent some of those conflicts, to minimize some of those other issues such as flooding neighbors and erosion. So kind of across the board, we are raising the bar and we are tweaking the code. We are here to help. We understand that we will have growth challenges as SFA grows and we're here to address that, but it's not all gonna be in one fail swoop and I'm gonna let Mike kind of speak to your specific question and then also just big picture and potential next steps.
And when you look at these conditions for approval, one of the things that our office looks at is the most intense use of a particular zone area. So if you think about a transition to R4, what would be the most intense R4? It would be apartment units per se. How many units it would be determined at a later stage? One of the things we did do at each phase in discussion with the applicant after the neighborhood meeting, after the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, we talked to them about what are the next steps. We talked to them about what are the potential consequences or adverse actions if P&amp;Z denied, if P&amp;Z approved, if council approved or denied. We do this with every applicant that we bring forward. This one, unlike some in recent past, have had more opposition, so it kind of bears out more conversations about what the possibilities are in this area. I will say many of the concerns about floodplain, about safety, about retention, detention facilities, those are things that we manage at a different level. That's site development permit stage, that's where engineers come in and they do floodplain management review. We'll look at retaining walls if those are needed. We'll look at possible detention facilities and every site is different depending on its location. This particular location would require floodplain management permit, a separate review just focusing on managing the floodplain, making sure that there's no, no areas that are disturbed unnecessarily because of the development. So the site would have to account for any changes that could incur additional floodwaters. Those are the kinds of things separate from the entitlement stage, which is where we are tonight, that the city also has a role in to ensure that there are no adverse actions that occur because of development on a particular property.
So that would apply the floodwater permit stuff? Would that still apply even if they keep their current zoning when they try to develop?
If, yes, yes it would because they are on the floodplain. And we generally take that approach across the city and make a determination if there are floodplain impacts. But just from a stormwater retention and detention scenario, we are looking at that no matter what develops within the city. we are looking at that no matter what develops within the city.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to add that I have been on the council the longest of anybody here. And I have seen so many issues, so many real challenges that I wished we could have prevented, you know. So I'm glad you all are taking some preventive measures.
We are taking a harder look at everything that crosses our desk. We do have engineering design standards in many facets of development across the city. We're looking to update some of those. We're looking to update some other ordinances specific to development. You'll see those coming forward later. But for tonight, many of the things that could be addressed from a concern standpoint in the neighborhood, if this site were ever to develop, we would address those at site development stage.
Well, we all really appreciate the hard work you're putting in to correct all that.
Well, I just want you to know that, like I kind of said in my prayer tonight, win or lose, like, the issue you have, it ruins your day when you don't win it, and it ruins your day if you don't win it. And I just wanna, you know, I'm not helping here much, but I just want to counsel that most of the people, 99% of the people over here, actually believe in everything you're doing, which is building infill and sidewalks and, like Brandy talked about. So I don't think there's much difference in you guys. You're just trying to do a major zone change right now. And that's really all we're talking about. And I don't think anybody is saying, "Don't come back with another application that is easier to get through." So, you know, I'm just trying to, you know, I just don't want, it's hard in this job sometimes because people are like, "Well, they just don't like us. They don't want us." And that is not true, okay? And I want you guys to understand that, that I think both sides have very viable arguments here. That's it?
Okay. All right. He just took everything out of my mouth, so.
Not everything.
Mr. Latham, Mr. Ms. Latham, I appreciate your tenacity on everything that you're doing. I hope one day you can build on this property something. But the problem is, is the zoning, you know? Going from light industrial to R4. And my vote would be to deny. It's not because of who you are, what you are. You made a brilliant, brilliant presentation. I mean, it was exceptional. I want you to keep doing what you're doing. You're just not gonna be able to be on that lot, as far as I'm concerned, right this minute, you know? So, anyway, I appreciate you. That's my decision. We'll vote later on.
How about we vote now?
You make the motion, or I'll make the motion.
I think Chad wants to.
I make a motion that we deny the zone change as presented.
I'll second. Having a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
May I request a short break?
Yes, we've got five minutes. Action on zoning case ZOON 2025-10 regarding a zone change from B2 general business to R1, single-family district for one parcel of land, approximately 2.49 acres, plus or minus in size, more particularly described by Nakadoche Central Appraisal District Parcel 23683, and located at 101 South Sanders Street, Nakadoche, Texas. City Planner.
Mayor, Council, Juan Palet, City Planner.
I move that we approve.
Too far.
I'll second.
I meant improve, sorry.
All right, go ahead and bring Kelly up.
She's doing it.
Technology grade.
Don't we have a technology guy here?
She's doing it.
Oh, because we changed the order.
It's the batteries.
Have you tried turning it off and back on? No, I'm joking. I teach it. I'm that guy. Save the day.
All right, so this property is on the southeast corner of West Main Street and South Sanders Street. It is approximately two and a half acres and developed with a historical single-family home. The subject property is surrounded by commercial and residential zoning districts, but primarily developed with residential land uses. The adjacent properties to the east and west are Zone B2 general business, but were developed with single-family homes. To the south of the property, the area is Zone R1 single-family and developed with single-family homes. The Future Land Use Plan designates the subject property as single-family residential. Staff believes that the Future Land Use Plan designation of the property is consistent with the proposed zoning and aligns with the existing residential development pattern in the area. This is the subject property from South Sanders, and residential properties to the north and south. This slide shows the types of uses within a 200-foot notification area. Staff sent out 12 public meeting notices to those property owners, 15 notice postcards to property owners within 200 and 500 feet. Staff has not received any responses in favor or in opposition of the request. Staff coordinated a neighborhood meeting at the Recreation Center on behalf of the applicant to receive input from surrounding property owners. 22 neighboring residents attended the meeting because of the notice letter stated the applicant was requesting B2 general business zoning. The applicant later changed her request to R1 single-family. Once this clarification was announced at the meeting, everyone was in favor of the request. Staff believes that this request meets the conditions for approval, as stated in the staff report. And P&amp;Z met on July 14th and voted unanimously to approve the request. And I'll be happy to answer any questions after the public hearing.
This is a public hearing. We'll therefore open the public hearing. Anybody have any comment? There being none, we'll go to discussion, and I'll make a motion for approval. I'm sorry, we've got to close the public hearing. I'll make a motion for approval.
I'll second.
Having a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. As a facet of public hearing I've ever done. Yes, sir.
Very welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Item 6E, Public Hearing, Discuss and Consider Action on Specific Use Permit Case, SUP 2025-04, Regarding Distillation of Liquor, Spirits, Etc., Craft in a B3 Central Business District for Property More Particularly Described by Nakadoche Central Appraisal District Parcel 22764 and Located at 403 and 405 East Hospital Street, Nakadoche, Texas.
Mayor, Council, Juan Palet, City Planner. This request is to amend an existing SUP that was approved in May of last year for the operation of craft distillery located at 403 East Hospital Street. The applicant, Sherry Hat, is requesting to expand the existing 1,200-square-foot distillery with tasting room to the adjacent tennis space located at 405 East Hospital Street. The new tennis space is approximately 1,428 square feet. It will be used for additional customer seating and employee work area. The subject property is Zone B3 Central Business and is surrounded with a mix of commercial uses. The Future Land Use Plan designates the subject property as central city mixed use. This land use category is defined as central core of the city and around traditional downtown, where a mix of retail, office, residential, and public uses is permitted and encouraged, subject to development and compatibility standards. The proposed expansion of the existing distillery is adjacent to the tennis space is consistent with the intent in the central city mixed-use designation. Staff believes that this request is considered to be in accordance with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. The applicant is proposing to change the previously approved hours of operation on Friday and Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., with the remaining days of the week staying the same, and adding an indoor music stage for live, low-volume acoustical performances. And this is a picture of the subject property. And to the right, you can see the adjacent tennis space that they will be occupying if approved. And I believe it was the Rusty Spur before. And this slide shows the types of uses within a 200-foot notification area. Staff mailed out 36 public meeting notices to those property owners and 12 notice postcards to property owners within 200 and 500 feet. Staff has not received any letters in opposition or in favor of the request. And staff coordinated a neighborhood meeting at the City Council Chambers on behalf of applicant, and no one attended the meeting. The staff believes that this request meets the conditions for approval with the following previously mentioned conditions, that the hours will change from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and no live, I'm sorry, Friday and Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., with the remaining days staying the same, and adding an indoor music stage. And this concludes my presentation. Now, if you have any questions after the public hearing.
Okay, this is a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. Anybody have anything to say? Come on.
Mayor, Council, I'm Sherry Hat, owner of Manhattan Distillery. And I was just in front of y'all about a year ago. We, of course, we're already blew our space when we signed our lease last year. So it's really good news that we've got the opportunity to expand our tasting room and increase our seating and increase our revenue. So our plan is to cut two holes in the wall. They were already there existing when the Rusty Spur had their little boutique. They closed those walls up, so we're just fixing to open that back up. We're gonna extend the wall that comes from the office where the tasting room used to be in the Rusty Spur, was to bring that wall across. We'll have prep area, seating area, and have a little stage area there for music and good vibes.
I know all about cutting holes in walls. I've got five buildings that have holes in the wall. I'm going to each one of them.
Does anybody have a question?
Nope, I'm good.
Where's your hat?
Yeah, it's really hot. That felt hat is hot in the summer, and I just can't bear to wear it.
Very identifiable, though.
But when it cools off, I'll have it back on.
Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion? If not, I'll make a motion. Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Having a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, 6F, Receive a Presentation on the 2025 Texas Blueberry Festival. Ms. Kelly Augustine, President of Chamber of Commerce and Grace Handler Welch's Festival Chair. And she, Grace is not here.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Kelly Augustine with the Nakadoche County Chamber. You know how our festival chair's heart is in this event, but she has out-of-state family visiting, so we excused her from coming in today. So, thank you for your time. We're gonna run through this report for you. The city has always been such a special partner in this event, and we certainly want you to understand all the good things that are happening in our festival and the people and the businesses that are included in that. So, first thing I want to bring up is all the photos you're gonna see here were, I say all, there may be one or two, but they were taken by the City of Nakadoche's Communications Intern, Connor Bronson, great photographer. I've seen him other places in town. He does great work, and we did get permission to use these photos. So there were some changes this year for the weekend. One of our events, formerly known as the Pet Parade, has moved to Friday night. It was held at the brewery, and it was changed to the Critter Costume Contest. So that was hosted by Willie 103 and Tractor Supply, and I think the brewery did well. And as you can see, it brought out a lot of families that really made the most of that. Also not pictured here and wasn't part of our festival, but Visit Nakadoche also put together the Blueberry Jam, which involved three bands, so there was live music going on on Friday night, the night before the festival, on Festival Park Stage. Okay, so the Chamber invested in a new venue this year. We would have done this before, it's Mast Hall, but unfortunately it was always booked. So we were able to jump in and grab that and feature three of the events there. So we had the Blueberry Cupcake Battle. Our Family Cross, the center of East Texas produces that event. They use it as a fundraiser, and they involve both professional and amateur bakers, as well as children and adult categories. You can see SFA President Weaver there with his family. They were enjoying it in the nice, cool, air-conditioned venue. Also, Cooking Up the Blues was held in Mast Hall, so that's the Texas A&amp;M Agrolife Extension Agents doing the cooking demonstrations that day. And then Ferrara's picked up the Berry Sweet Shop. Formerly, that would have been held at Regent's Bank, but we know that's not available any longer. So Ferrara's made the best of it. And they used the proceeds, all the money that was collected selling the sweet treats, which was around $800, was donated to the local Walk to End Alzheimer's effort. They also operated their Cool Zone out on Main Street and gave away 1,000 cooling towels to our guests. Offsite, there's other things going on around the town. We had the Pick Your Own Blueberries at the Blueberry Place. This is a tradition for a lot of families. It's sponsored by Encore Electric Delivery. And Sherry Randall said the attendance was unbelievable, and 1,197 pounds of berries were picked that day. The Paul Kendrick Memorial 42 tourney benefiting our local Nakadoche Salvation Army was going on in the County Courthouse Annex Meeting Room. I know we see some locals there, familiar faces, but we also see folks traveling from Dallas and Fort Worth area. This has kind of become a tradition for some of those folks to come play 42 in Nakadoche at the Blueberry Festival. So there is Darla O'Neil. She is our Vice Chair of Resource Development, but she also works for our local Salvation Army. And she was able to raise over $1,000 for that organization through this event. We also had the Running of the Blueberries going on that morning. The City of Nakadoche's Parks and Recreation organizes this event, and Joy Palmer was happy to report that it was a record-high attendance of runners this year, 466. And they netted 13,000 for the city's dog park. Food and traditional favorites, they include Plaza Principal Stage. Had entertainment going all day long, Best Country Willie there. And Eaton sponsored that stage this year. Eaton stepped up. They also, if you were at the festival, you might have heard the music and the announcements going on during festival day. That was something new we tried this year. I know other public events came through the festival because they wanted to see how this worked. But it was a great way to put out messages about the festival, about the- But it was a great way to put out messages about the festival, about the town, about Eaton and their community support, as well as play really good Blueberry Festival Texas-style music throughout the day. It really set a good mood. We also had, everybody knows about the Nacogdoches Kiwanis Club's Blueberry Pancake Breakfast. We had the SFA coaches there. We had a lot of athletes doing their public service and flipping those cakes. Kobe Garthel was there. He did a great job. This year was one of the best with the Kiwanis selling seventeen hundred plates. They raised more than eleven thousand dollars for the club. I believe this is their largest annual fundraiser for that organization. They cooked more than that, too, to give to the volunteers and the athletes that were there. And that's a lot of blueberry pancakes. We had Brookshire Brothers back with those fresh Texas-grown blueberries for sale. A lot of people come down to this festival just to buy those blueberries right there off the brick streets, and they had other blueberry treats. So the Festival Car Show wanted to bring out, that was sponsored by Motor Homes of Texas and RV Outfitters of Texas this year. It also involved Divergence Media. They ran the show, and they had Kicks one oh five doing a live radio remote there. We want to say thank you to Bill Elliott for allowing the car show to move to the Elliott Building parking lot. There was a lot of rain that week, and it was just a little too soft in the park to have all those cars, and it worked out really well. The Blue Pie Smiling at Me Pie Eating Contest, sponsored and managed by McWilliams Heating, Cooling, and Plumbing. They had adult and children's contests, but as you can see here in this picture, the adults just act like children. So that's always a lot of fun. Downtown shopping going on. We had, you know, great turnout of vendors as usual, both on the streets as well as some in the park. And the downtown merchants did a great job this year, too. We heard really good reports from the businesses that were located inside the footprint of the festival as well as outside and throughout town. Festival Park, you know, the kids' activities, we have that bounce park. And I don't know if you know this family that owns AMP Inflatables, but they are very entrepreneurial, and we love working with them. So every time I get to see them out and about, I'm usually hearing about a new endeavor. I'm glad they can use the festival to promote their inflatable business. We also have the KSWP, KAVX Christian Radio Group there with their Kids' obstacle course. The Blue Washerboard Tournament this year was hosted by Blue Thumb Pools and sponsored by Batter's Law Firm. Our pickleball demonstrations were back. They were actually out in the park on the basketball courts, and that was done by Old Town Pickleball. And the mural painting and tours by Brushing Up Nat brought a lot of awareness to all these organizations. Really cool thing. So June fourteenth, the day of our festival, was also the Army's two hundred and fiftieth birthday. They came to us early on and asked if they could be a part of this or use the festival to really highlight what's going on with the organization here in Nacogdoches. Of course, we welcomed them. There was a lot going on in Festival Park. They had a joint forces swearing-in ceremony. I was there for that. It was very moving. A lot of families there to see their kids, you know, being sworn in. Also, an inspirational speech and song by veteran vocalist JP Lane, and they even cut the birthday cake. So that was a lot of fun. I can't not bring up Tipton Ford. Neil Slaton really adds to this event. Can't thank him enough either. I love now seeing the photos of families that can actually show us where their kids are stair-stepped year after year, taking their pictures in front of that Blueberry Festival Ford truck. It's really special for them. And then he brings these kind of attractions that you'll see at NASCAR races. That's a simulator for a NASCAR drive. You can record your times, you know, beat your buddy, whatever. And all that was free of charge. Neil does this for us and for the town. So I do want to say thank you to all of these sponsors that are involved in supporting the festival. Again, Tipton Ford, Eaton, and Ferraris all stepped up into those high-tier sponsorship levels and really added a lot to the festival. So all in all, we had forty one for-profit businesses involved, nineteen not-for-profit that use our festival to bring awareness to their businesses, their products, services, their missions, raise money for their causes. It's a great collaboration throughout this town. Also, thirty six downtown merchant spaces were used. We're very happy that we can partner with our downtown businesses and numerous volunteers. This was one group that was there for one particular planning meeting, but obviously, there's tons more that are part of this, including great city staff. We can't say enough to the city staff that get involved with this. So Ashley Morgan, Executive Director of Visit Nacogdoches, was able to share some of this information. This is their new tool that they use, Placer. This is the first time we've been able to apply it to the Texas Blueberry Festival. And she showed me a lot more, just so you know. She can go much deeper into this. But what she gave me to bring to you tonight is kind of an overall look at the festival day and what it does in Nacogdoches. So the sixteen point seven K number that you see that were people, our guests, that were at the festival, they are what you call the unique visitors, so it doesn't include people who work or live in downtown area. Probably did not count us or our volunteers because we were in and out all week and down there all day. So again, counting cell phones and that technology, I still feel very confident in being able to say that we bring about twenty thousand people to downtown Nacogdoches for the Texas Blueberry Festival. And then the little map area shows you kind of where they came from. If I expanded it out, you'd even see from other states, but I think this is the most interesting. Not that surprising. We've seen this kind of activity before. But what I really like to see is we're actually pulling some people from the Austin area now. So there's a lot going on in that area, and the fact that they get in their cars or however they get to Nacogdoches, they come over and celebrate blueberries with us. This is also just some interesting information. I'll leave it up for a second so you can see. Ashley was telling me this is where people were coming from to go to our test festival and then going to after they left the festival. And so you'll see things like Nine Flags Coffee Roasters there. That's actually Brendan's barbecue. And of course, Fredonia Hotel, I know that they are busy. They let me know, you know, when they're booked, and they need more stuff for blueberry information and things they want to share with their guests. So I know the hotel's very busy. But that's kind of interesting to look at. And then this is just a snapshot of household income of our guests for the festival. And let me catch up here, so I make sure I say this correctly. So you will see, and I'm a color person, the color bars near the top of that graph, that does represent low-income guests, forty K and lower. But what I really liked seeing, too, was that we also attract folks in that hundred K or more. So those color bars kind of help you see, just at a glance, the folks that are coming to the festival and their household income. So normally, I would turn this over to Grace to give closing comments because she really enjoys showing her appreciation to the city and the people of Nacogdoches and what this festival means to her, the town, to the Chamber of Commerce. I, too, would like to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. I just wish I could capture the moments when we see the looks on people's faces, when they have those unique experiences here in our town. It's very special, and I'm very proud to be a part of that. So thank you for your time and letting me give this report. Do you have any questions?
Kelly, this is your largest fundraiser for the chamber, right?
The largest fundraiser for the chamber? It is large, but we have other fundraisers, our Golf Bash, and we have some other events. Yes.
If you tied all, everything tied in with blueberry, like, is the golf tied in with the blueberry?
Not any longer. It started out that way, but we did make a decision, I think, before my time to split those two events up. Yeah, so we do have that, that particular. We have probably about twenty eight programs in four divisions of the chamber. Not all are fundraisers, so proceeds from other things have to support, you know, some of those other programs.
Right.
And then there's a lot of investment that the chamber makes for the festival. And we do not charge any of those folks that are using the festival as a platform for their fundraisers. We don't charge them to be a part of this.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Tiny question.
Yeah.
Were all the hotels sold out, or do you know?
I checked in with Ashley Morgan yesterday for that. I would love to know the hotel occupancy. We normally can get that information, but it wasn't available yet. I also like to look at the Comptroller's Reports for state tax, sales tax, excuse me. And I checked with our friends at the EDC, and they assured me that would be available tomorrow morning. So I'm sorry, I don't have those numbers for you. Again, Ashley has a lot more information that she can share through that. And she, with her organization and the chamber, worked very closely with advertising this event. We don't want to duplicate or take away from each other. We spend a lot of time working our marketing dollars, which the chamber invests quite a bit in advertising. We actually upped that last year, and we're continuing to up that.
Well, don't worry about it. I'll ask later on, but thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I know that Fredonia is. I'd like to know if the others are, too. Because they have been in the past, but I can't say that for this year.
I was just looking at the map, and so many of them are for right around in the area. It looks like a day's drive, and just curious.
Correct, yeah.
So thank you so much.
And that's one of the reasons I think they invest their time and talents to put on that Blueberry Jam. So one thing I left out that she gave me was twenty six percent drove the ten to thirty miles, twenty percent drove a hundred to two fifty. So if twenty percent's driving, you know, over a hundred miles, there's a good chance that they're staying.
Right, right. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Oh, could we do our poster presentation?
Yeah, Rick can take it.
All right, cool.
Take his picture.
Yeah. But he won't film.
If you're standing here, I'll get your photo.
You look good, Rick.
Can you make it cooler next year?
No.
Just less humidity. I'll take that. Thank you for your help.
Okay, next item. Thank you, Kelly. Next item. Receive an update, a brief update on the special session of eighty ninth Texas Legislature.
But you, Rick.
Rick, I said brief.
And I think we, we should have a very, speaking of brief, there you go. Okay, we've been tracking, obviously, and one, I want to thank Mike for pulling this together and working with Jerry and really just keeping me kind of on point. So really, if you look at the, there's been a whole bunch of things. We're only going over the current special session. We're going to send you separate summary documentation on the prior session, which is a lot more information than even this. But really, it comes down to three things that we've really been focused on in terms of ones that have had action, that we've tracked and even tried to have some input on. The property tax item, which would have been taking the tax cap from three and a half to two and a half percent, the regulation of THC and hemp, and then the ban on taxpayer-funded lobbying. And as you can see, there has been a, I'll say it again, a plethora of other items filed already in this session. You could hit that. There you go. So probably one of the ones of most concern we were worried with was Senate Bill nine. We had obviously reached out to our delegation, had some discussions with them. Luckily, there, there were many other cities that were concerned, small cities, because, you know, you have a lot of required regulatory functions. And, you know, sometimes you're already kind of at a base level, so how much more can you cut? Say, if you have a downturn, as an example. So we had kind of requested, hey, could you bracket it even fifty? What ended up happening was it got bracketed to cities seventy five thousand or more. So that was our, our primary ask. So in that case, we're good. We'll keep our head down. It was kind of like the other item on the occupancy in that bracket, which didn't apply to us because of the size of SFA and the twenty thousand in that case of school size. Senate Bill twelve, that's also out of committee. Or see, that's not a committee. They actually voted on that one, right, already? The Senate, okay, so it's out of the Senate now, not out of the Senate Committee. The Senate Bill nine actually was out of, out of committee last week. Or I guess this week. In terms of the prohibition on lobbying, we think that's probably going to end up passing everything. So that will mean no paid lobbyist activities for us or anybody else that's not bracketed.
We pay it now for lobbyists.
Believe our, Jerry, off the top of your head, do you remember what the contract dollar amount is?
Anyway, it's going to go away.
Well, it'll go away. We won't have the year two, and we were, in all honesty. Okay, so about sixty thousand. In all honesty, I think that the ROI, we were probably going to make a recommendation to not do year two anyway because I think that what's been the most beneficial, and, and here I am defending lobbyists, this is not an era where you're getting much ROI on that. I think it's really looking at the key items of most importance and just working with your delegation and having them coordinate with like-minded members of their either caucus or kind of general focus areas, small cities that might be within their purview and others that, that have that versus some of the major metros, because that seems to be the area where we've had the most strength. It doesn't mean also that we're kind of able to line up as, as TML being the most effective either, because I think if you really look at TML functionally, it's a lot that they're not going to be able to do, too, now, because that was kind of part of what they were or are. So, you know, I've said this before, we were here three hundred years before everything else. We'll be here in three hundred years after everything else. That's the goal. So survive. Next. As you've heard, there's currently not a quorum. We've had some members of, of the House head out of state. I'll just leave it at that. And then the last one is, we've had a, Jerry, did you want to speak to that one? I know every time you talk reversing, I don't want to use a double or triple negative and mess it up.
So HB two one two seven actually came out of the, the previous legislative session, so twenty twenty three. It was also referred to as the Death Star Bill. You may have heard of that. About as soon as it went into effect, several cities kind of joined together and filed a lawsuit, arguing that it was unconstitutional. That was upheld, or the, the court in Austin found that, or made that finding of unconstitutional, that it being unconstitutional. And so it had been on appeal since that time. So we're talking about, you know, two years plus now. But in July of this year, the Third Court of Appeals reversed that ruling. And so, and they reversed outright, so they didn't send it back to the trial court for any other determinations. They said that the, the cities did not have standing, arguing that, that the state of Texas was also an improper defendant in the lawsuit and that in the future, they should wait until they were challenged by third parties or private parties who would bring some action against them, challenging their, their code of ordinances related to the particular portions of the bill that argue, or that set forth the preemption. So under that bill, there were certain statutes, for example, the occupations code and other codes that are listed therein that the legislature through that bill said are now preempted and that you couldn't that are listed therein that, um, the legislature through that bill said are now preempted and that you could not, um, either uh, act, uh, and enforce, um, a current ordinance or enact a new ordinance in those particular fields of preemption. Um, and that's one of the questions that that lawsuit was sought to address that was never answered. In any case, uh, that's now back, uh, so in, in effect. Um, and so, uh, the super-preemption bill is the law of the land at this point. Um, I will tell you that, um, the city of Dallas just received, uh, a notice from a third party uh, with a list of, um, ordinances that they want withdrawn or, um, uh, amended. And, uh, failing to do that, then they're gonna file suit. So we may see an appeal in a short time about that, that whole, um, you know, issue that the, at least the Third Court of Appeals said was, um, caused the standing issue. Um, I would just point out that if you recall, um, in the last regular session, there was a bill that would have, that was filed that addressed, um, additional, uh, statutes that they were gonna add, including the penal code, uh, the health and safety code, um, and, uh, I think other parts of the, um, uh, local government code that would preempt any, uh, city ordinance. Um, that did not, it, it got out of committee, but it never got up for a vote, uh, before the session ended. However, um, I just pulled this up, um, HB one oh three has been filed in the special session. So it's, it's essentially the same bill that was filed that didn't get the vote in the last session. So it is currently being filed. Um, the, uh, I guess the real kicker in this, uh, new bill, not only is to add those particular sections, it, it's the election code, the penal code, the health and safety code, and as I mentioned, other portions of the local government code. Uh, but what it would say is that the, it, it gives the AG the authority to go in and investigate and file an action against any city that it deems is in violation of this. Um, if, if that happens, immediately, um, the comptroller is ordered to withhold sales tax funds. Um, the city is precluded from adopting a property tax rate that exceeds their no new tax, uh, revenue tax rate. And they, the, the city cannot receive, uh, any state grant funds during the pendency of the, the challenge. So we're talking about litigation. That could be any number of years that you would, uh, be precluded of that. If there's a finding, um, ultimately the AG is successful in, in making that challenge, then, um, basically this, the, the, uh, city is precluded from adopting a, a tax rate in excess of the no new revenue rate uh, for five years. Um, and, um, also sales tax funds, um, are continuing to be withheld. Uh, let's see, uh, to, basically to, uh, address any penalties that were assessed. So that's the nature of that bill. Again, it's, it mirrors basically what was filed in, at the regular session. It hasn't gone anywhere. It's filed in the House. As, as, uh, Rick mentioned, uh, the, there's no quorum right now. So there's no action being taken on that, unlike some of these other, uh, Senate bills that are, have gone through committee and, and some of them actually have votes. Uh, no actions have been taken on this, but I just wanted you to be aware, based on the lawsuit and now this action, we're probably gonna see this again and again. Uh, I, I don't know what's gonna happen with this session, uh, but, um, we may, may see another special session being called.
Any questions?
I have a couple. So, um, have we, um, taken any action anticipating this or any of the ordinances that we've passed? Um, are they things that we thought we needed to do because we would be required to do them or anything we've taken over the last year?
As far as the super-preemption?
Yeah, as, as far as like, um, some of the things they're trying to do, health and safety, penal code, I mean, I've, we've done a lot of ordinances, so I'm not sure if any of them are in.
Sure. So, you know, and we're assuming this goes through, um, but for example, uh, you know, the camping ban that we just did.
Yeah.
Um, it was a couple of weeks ago or maybe a couple, uh, meetings ago. Um, you know, uh, you know, if that did go through, we would be precluded as a city from enforcing that.
Okay.
So that, that'd be the reality. Um, you know, there are some discussions in the staff right now about, um, you know, potential, um, amendments to our code related to, um, you know, eight-liners and other things. And now with the, the super-preemption bill kind of back, you know, in effect, um, we're kind of taking, uh, a measured response to that and seeing what, how that's gonna address because those are specifically, um, and, um, discussed in the occupations code, which is now been preempted. So, uh, you know, those things, those are conversations that we're having, uh, internally. Um, as to some of the other, um,
But they're not preempted.
Other statutes, I'll, or bills, I'll let Rick address that, but I don't, I don't know that we're doing anything internally.
No, we, we haven't triggered that because we, it's kind of like, I'd hate to bring you something and then have it be, like you said, if Dallas files something or, or if, again, um, that being said, we would be, uh, you can use the eight-liners as a, our hands are tied or historically have been tied in some areas and they would be tied again in others. Uh, it'll be interesting to see how that would also mesh together with, uh, the THC bill and some of those other items and how that would be enforced if not by us. Uh, or by the, that, to me, that's the big question. So if, if they step in, let's say with a ban, but it means that we aren't the ones to do it, then again, I think that, is it TDLR or is it, um, you know, there's, where, who would, who else would be coming in and what would the protocol be? If something gets reported, does it just mean that PD hands that over to another agency?
So, so you mentioned three things that you thought were the most serious. And the first one, the property tax, um, um, increase.
You can go back to the first.
But it's okay. But, but you don't think that really is a danger anymore because it's seventy-five thousand, city's a seventy-five thousand, correct?
Correct. And, you know, those, again, that, that, not trying to wish that on others, but, um, you can, you can definitely make the argument about economies of scale.
Yeah.
Um, I, I'll, I'll try not to make a joke with Randy about the other one about freezing our, on the preemption one about freezing our, our sales tax, and he'd say half of it's already frozen. I'm joking. Um, so, I mean, the, the, the truth of the matter is, I think there is some recognition that, you know, if we go down anymore in certain areas, you got nothing. At, at least we have that, uh, and we had it before. I think our, our biggest worry, I mean, to me, is what else could come before the special's over? And then what comes next session that they try again on? I say they, meaning probably some of the other lobby groups, obviously not on behalf of the cities.
So we had three things. We had the property taxes, which you think were okay. Taxpayer lobbying, I thought, I think sixty thousand dollars.
And I don't dis- well, and I don't disagree with, I don't disagree with that one. Um, in, in, in some ways, that's partially how we got here. What I'd like to see is just a, a general prohibition on it across the board also, but like not allowing developers and private sector to lobby also.
Right.
I think that would be the most fair thing. Um, because I believe that that's who's actually lobbied the last session, this session, and, and will be the future session.
So what about the other one, the THC and the hemp? You have that, you're highlighting that and I'm not as familiar with.
Um, you know, we've got our various vape shops and all those different forms of, all those different things that are currently legal or currently legal for those over a certain age. And also knowing that PD, PD's everywhere in the state have difficulty in terms of, they, the producers of these also constantly change the contents and, and the percentages. And that's, I believe, that's one of the areas that, you know, an outright ban, um, would probably be very beneficial, um, especially being in a, a school town, a college town. Um, but I'll leave it at that.
And one more question. Um, I know we have, I assume we're working on these emergency communications, warning systems, all that. Would the legislation impact what we're doing or are we?
Yeah, there has, there hasn't been action out of committee.
Okay.
In, in most, most cases. I know that those hearings have been going on, uh, in central Texas. I don't know if you've watched some of them. Uh, I can tell you this, we've got a, we've got a great team here. Uh, don't want to second guess any of what others are going through and their circumstances and, and everything that happened up there. Uh, what we would do, depending on the ones that move forward, if, if there's items that we're going to have to address, be they working with the state on different technologies in terms of the creeks, in terms of other, uh, communications or interoperability between different, uh, functions. We will definitely, obviously do that and set that in motion. We just need to know what those are first.
Thanks. Those are my questions.
And just to let you know, I think the session ends August nineteenth, if I'm not incorrect on that, but it's, it's somewhere pretty soon. Um, right now, again, the House has no quorum, so they can't do any business. So any, you know, even, even the ones we discussed have gone through the Senate. They still need House action. So, uh, again, we may see a spe- another special session.
I was gonna say, doesn't what we've heard that there would be another, another special, special session?
But I, I'm not sure if that's gonna address the quorum issue. We'll see.
Yeah.
And they'll lock the doors and.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, that concludes our regularly scheduled meeting. Uh, we'll now enter into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four and five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one. We will convene into executive session at six, uh, excuse me, seven fifty-eight. Be back shortly. It is, uh, five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one. Uh, Personnel Matters pursuant to Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four. Deliberations regarding the appointment or employment of a public officer or employee. The subject of this executive session is a discussion of the following positions, Director of Human Resources and Director of Human, uh, Director of Information Technology.
Um, I'll make the motion that we, uh, name Brittany Tucker, Director of Human Resources, and Dennis Varela as Director of Information Technology.
Have a motion. All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item B, consultation with city attorney, no action taken. Item C, Personnel Matters pursuant to Texas Government Code Section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four. Deliberations regarding the appointment or employment of a, of a public officer or employee. The subject of this executive session is to discuss the annual evaluation and amendment of the city manager's and the city attorney's contracts.
Mayor, I would make a motion that we authorize the mayor to negotiate the final terms of amendment to the city manager and city attorney's contract in all matters therein.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All in aye. Motion carries unanimously. This concludes this evening's meetings. Thank you very much for coming and God bless the great city of Nacogdoches, Texas.